And. There, that all off, don't want anything on, on the computer.
Not exactly what other people are seeing, because that one over there is different.
Yeah, well, this, that's because my camera's on, so it's looking. So this won't show, this will show what's going on in front of the cap camp. Okay, at seven thirty, we're going to call the special meeting of the Harlem Township zoning commission to order and Mr. Cannon, oh, there you are. Would you call the role, please?
Sure. Mike Cavler.
Present.
Johnny Manson.
Here.
Bruce Hamel.
Bruce is absent today. Okay.
Jenny Lewis.
Here.
Ali.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. And with that, we're going to have a short meeting here of the, as I said, it's a special meeting, but then at seven forty-five, we will open the hearing. That has been announced regarding the Harlem Township Quick Strategy Guide as consideration for, as an addendum to become part of our township comprehensive plan. Mike Cannon is our new director of zoning and development and looking around to see if there are any other officials present. Steve Eisenbrown is here as a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. How many other members of the planning committee?
Holly.
And Holly. Oh, Bruce.
McCary.
Uh, Bruce McCary, right? Or am I mispronouncing it? And Bruce is a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. Jim Steel Smith is a member of Strategic Planning Committee. They.
You've got Molly Snodgrass.
Molly Snodgrass, sorry. She did introduce herself there. I didn't see you back there, Molly. Thank you. So. This, you've got one, two, three, four, and Tom is a member of the Strategic Planning Committee as well, representing the zoning commission when they have their meetings. And they've been having a lot of meetings recently, especially. Okay, with that, we don't have any other township officials to introduce. For anyone that might be out there on Zoom, I don't know if there are any, but for the regular meeting and then for the hearing as well, we will ask that you keep yourself muted until we get to the public participation portion of the hearing for the meeting tonight as well. And then at that time, if you have something that you have a question or some input you want to make, we'll provide the opportunity for you to do that. Now, under the new business part of our meeting tonight, it was suggested to us as commission will remember that we make some small changes in the procedural guidelines regarding zoning requests. And with that, to include either a requirement or a recommendation that the person would contact the zoning office, specifically, I think it was mentioned to contact my co- as the director, but that's why we want to have some discussion about. Virginia drafted some language and I'll ask her if she would been.
Sorry, I'm letting somebody.
That's, that's okay. Thank you. As an addition to what's already there, Virginia, go ahead. You can explain your two items here.
Oh, I gotta pull them up first. Do you have a hard copy?
Yeah, I printed it off.
Thank you. Uh, so for the checklist, I wanted to add, all applicants are encouraged to meet with the zoning director prior to submission to ensure compliance. Um, again, that's pretty short and sweet, but I wanted to keep the checklist onto one page, single sided. I think we tried to do that when we wrote it originally and we should stick to that. I just read that the trustees have asked us to maybe not say specifically zoning director.
Correct. I was gonna point that out, but you saw it too.
But yeah, zoning offices. I did have one question about that, though. When we had discussed this all initially, we had said we as a commission were not going to sit down with applicants ahead of time that got too too hairy on what, what could come back to be problematic. So with that being said, who, who are they suggesting we broaden this to? Amanda and Mike instead of just Mike?
I would say, yeah. That, that makes sense.
Okay.
Body in my department.
Well, it could stay to you or your designee. But the designated can't be one of us.
That's, yeah, that's the only.
But I'm saying if, if our concern is, right now it's not a problem, but our concern is if we say, you know, whether it be required or somebody had mentioned it's a requirement. It could be a bottleneck for people. We don't want that.
No, and I'm fine with that. I just.
Me and Amanda.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because we had had this discussion a year ago about how we shouldn't be counseling the public on it. So I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that.
Uh, I think, well, at least for me, I don't know that anyone's changed their position regarding that. Am I correct?
No, is this going to be in the zoning resolution, though?
No, it won't be in the resolution, no. It'd just be a change in the, remember the checklist.
And the procedural.
And then in the procedural guidelines.
Okay, I just want to make sure it would be easy to change if we put somebody's actual name in.
Yeah, well, and I don't think we should put an actual name necessarily. I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't.
I think it would be better.
Office is fine.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Office.
You could say zoning office. Okay.
Yeah, so, so zoning office is, is fine.
Would you make a note on there? And then what I'll do is I'll send that to, well, Mike's here, he can take it with him. And then you can have Amanda go into those two documents and make the changes.
Okay.
So what's the second one?
Uh, so the second one goes in the procedural guidelines. All applicants are encouraged to meet with the zoning director prior to submitting an application. The zoning director's contact information can be found under the Contact Us section of the township website. Harlem Town, Harlem T W P dot com.
Change that to office, too.
Yes, again, change that to zoning office.
And zoning offices contact.
Yeah, it's on the website. It's under.
In both, in both the zoning directors.
Yeah, it's.
Yes.
Yeah. And the office of staff now, it used to be that that would have been a problem, but it shouldn't be a problem now for them to make contact.
So the other suggestion, Joni had said she was wondering if we should maybe require it. I personally don't think we should, because we do have some people like Joe Clay submitting applications, and I don't think he needs to meet with us ahead of time. He's done.
That's, that's fine. I, I think we, we need to realize there will be some people who don't.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's why I said, that's why I said for the procedural guidelines, which again, we have more room to lengthen. If we wanted to add something in there to the effect of, you know, this, this meeting will help you not lose your twelve hundred dollars.
That's what it's for.
Yeah, the, the fee has, because the fees increased, it's even more significant now than it used to be.
Yeah.
Yes, so I, I don't think there's space on a single sided page to add that to the checklist, but I think we could add that to the procedural guidelines, just as another, like, we're trying to help you out. Don't, don't lose your money, but I didn't draft any specific language for that.
But nobody will get to the step, maybe, maybe they will. All applicants are strongly encouraged to meet with the zoning office. I don't know whether that makes a difference.
So you're saying all applicants are almost required?
Yeah.
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 All right. I don't mind adding the word strongly.
I don't either.
Think that's.
I don't, I think, I think reminding them about the money at stake has a higher likelihood of actually encouraging them to do it.
Oh.
Well, and then procedural guidelines, there is some reference to.
Oh, and with the acknowledgement, we reference it a lot.
They still don't seem to pay attention.
Best interest. We're trying to help you keep your money and like, we can't, we can't not collect the fees. That's how people in these buildings are paid, but.
Does that give the false perception that if they meet with them, that they won't potentially lose their money?
Well, and so that was the issue initially with, with why we were not counseling the public.
Yeah, no, it won't, it won't guarantee that they won't lose their money.
Do we really want to add that in?
Oh. We'll have to have some maybe additional discussion about that. We're not going to have time enough maybe to get into depth regarding that tonight, but the language can still go in, that they're strongly encouraged.
Well, we can, we can add strongly in front of it and call it a day if everyone's fine with that.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think we should, we should finish this up. I think, I think there are ways of handling.
All right, then, could I have a motion to approve the changes that we've discussed and the checklist and the procedural guidelines as amended on.
I will make a motion to approve the language that was submitted for the checklist and the procedural guidelines as we've amended them tonight.
And the second?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? Hey, we, none then would call a mo-, uh, call a role. Would you call the role again, Mike, on the motion?
Right? Mike Cavler?
Aye.
Joni Manson?
Aye.
Bruce Hamel? Virginia Lewis?
Aye.
Ali?
Aye.
Brittany Hopper?
Aye.
All right, the motion passed and Mike will give you that copy. And if you would take it to Amanda, then she can make those changes in those two documents.
Holly, did you admit someone? I heard it, dang, somebody did. Okay, thank you.
Well, we, it's seven forty-one, so we, we made it. We got that part done. I don't think we could probably reach a final decision on the standard statement for use by the zoning commission members to private requests from the public, but Virginia, again, that was something that you encountered as a potential issue. So
Yes.
We'll take a couple of minutes and at least let everybody know what your thinking was on that. And then if we don't get this addressed tonight, we'll, I'll bring it back on the agenda for our first meeting in March.
Yeah, so I, I think there is value in us having a presence on social media so that when there are members of the public spreading information, whether it is accurate or not, we can step in and either provide more information or point them in the direction of getting proper information. And I was unaware that there were these regulations. And so I know Joni and I have both both commented on some things occasionally, and I, I was okay with doing that. I thought, you know, as a private, private citizen, I can comment on this. Um, but then I was, I was sent a rather snide remark via private message and I, I don't want to be getting into, to catfights with the public. That's not what I'm interested in. I'm interested in providing information and you either take it or leave it. So I just wanted to have something, so I could send back, you know, if you'd like to come to a public meeting and discuss, great. If not, please don't message me privately. So that, that was all.
You had a, a response to something you put on that was private. That wasn't anybody, it wasn't there for everybody else to see.
Yes, and, and so that's my other thing. If we are an open commission, I want it to be open so everybody can see what I'm saying. I, I don't need to be doing that privately so that something can be misinterpreted about what I've said. So.
Um, and what I will suggest that we do is that I bring this back for further discussion and as you pointed out, that now the township has a policy regarding social media which relates to what we should or should not do
Yes.
as members of any committee representing the township. So I think we need to all review that and then we can have a additional discussion about.
I do think there is a difference between when we're representing the township versus when we're responding as, as residents of the township.
Yeah, well, I think there is a difference too, but I think we need to have some additional time to have some discussions about how we clarify that. I don't want to just either abandon it at this point or say we're gonna approve it. Uh, with that in mind, we're got, we're coming up on seven forty-five, so we will recess and either we, I'll either take a motion to recess this special meeting and we can reconvene following the hearing, or if your preference would be to adjourn the special meeting, that's fine too. And then we'll go, we'll open the hearing.
Um, do we have to adjourn to a specific time?
No, if we're going to, if we adjourn it, we're done for tonight on the special meeting.
Okay, but if we.
Recession.
Yeah, if we recess, does it have to be to a certain time?
I would say until.
Well, immediately following the hearing, is what I would suggest.
Okay.
Tonight. Uh, if we're going to, if you want to continue any discussion, I don't know how long the hearing will run, you know?
And come that time, we can decide to.
To close it again.
Yeah, we can, we can adjourn it, you know, uh, quickly when we come back.
Yeah. Okay, then I will make a motion to recess uh, this meeting until after the special hearing.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so all in favor of recess until the hearing on the Township Quick Strategy Guide is completed for tonight? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, we are in recess. And with that, I'll move forward to open the hearing for consideration of the Harlem Township Strategy Guide as an addendum to the Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan. And with that, Mike, again, I have to ask you to call the role.
Mike Cavler?
Present.
Johnny Manson?
Here.
Bruce Hamel? Virginia Lewis?
Here.
Ali?
Here.
Brittany Hopper?
Here.
All right, thank you. For members of the public who are here and those who are participating online, because I've heard the ding a few times. I know that we've got a few people that have joined us on, on Zoom. Let me just briefly explain the procedures that we'd like you to follow. As everyone would know, only one person really can be heard, so therefore we request that only one person speak at a time. Please come up to the, uh, for those present, please come up to the podium. And at a point in time, when the public is provided the opportunity to participate and speak at that, at that point. Um, at that time, you will need to give your name and, and address so that it can be recorded, be brief and be factual. Please do not bring up a point or question previously addressed or asked. And remember, again, only one person can be heard at a time and do not interrupt a speaker. Please do not carry on your own conversations while an individual is speaking. And if there is a group present that wishes to be heard, please have a spokesperson for the group address the commission. For those of you on, at home on Zoom, please keep your microphones muted. And when we get to the public portion, you may unmute if you have a question or a comment that you need to make. But that for the, the purpose of tonight's hearing, we as a commission will be considering adopting the Harlem Township Quick Strategy Guide, which the town, Harlem Township Strategic Planning Committee has generated and submitted to us for consideration. And we will be considering it in terms of adopting it as a part of the Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan. What would happen following that if we would move forward and make, approve adoption as part of the comprehensive plan, it would be a recommendation on our part to the trustees. And the trustees then would consider in, in another meeting, the adoption of this as part of the comprehensive plan. All right, with that, I want to now ask Holly Maitai. Holly is the consultant who has been working with the Strategic Planning Committee in developing strategies and putting this document together for consideration. They have been very busy for the last three weeks or so. They've held ten community meetings. So hopefully, if you would have had the opportunity to participate in that, I know that postcards were sent out to all residents in the township. And those people who had submitted an email address previously, they received notification that way. They held, as I said, ten meetings and they organized them by area. And with, with that, I'll just turn back to you now, Holly, and you can give us kind of a, an overview for, especially for the public and for those folks who are participating on Zoom.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, as Mike mentioned, my name's Holly Natty. I'm with Crossroads Community Planning, and I've been working with the Strategic Planning Committee for the last ten or so months in preparation of preparing the Quick Strategy Guide, which is in front of the zoning commission tonight for the public hearing. As Mike said, we just completed ten community meetings. We had probably, I think approximately four hundred people that attended one or more of those meetings. So we had a very good turnout. Um, it was really nice being able to have that setting in this room so that we could have a little dialogue and conversation and answer questions. Um, and really try to help everyone understand why we are planning and what we are planning. Uh, I don't want to go through that presentation tonight because it does take an hour to get through. And there were ten meeting opportunities for everyone to, to come to and listen to that. Um, but if you did, weren't able to be at one of those meetings, the presentation is on the township's website. Um, so the entire slideshow with my narration of what was said during the meetings is on there. So feel free to go on and listen and, and go through the slides as well. The plan is also, the draft plan is also on the website. Um, what I do want to point out, since we have it here tonight, is really the, what was the driving force um, behind all this is being able to understand what happened in Chandler in nineteen seventy-nine um, when the Intel site went in in Chandler, Arizona, versus, and how that relates to where Harlem Township sits in relation to the proposed Intel site in New Albany. Um, so we have the drive time maps that are up there showing five, ten and fifteen minute drive times, both in Arizona and in Harlem Township. And showing how everything within that fifteen minute drive time in Arizona developed in the first ten years after Intel arrived. And if you look at the Harlem Township map, ninety percent of the township is within that fifteen minute drive time. So with sewers coming three different ways and with what we saw with Intel coming, um, happening in Arizona, we felt it was necessary to find ways to better plan for the township, provide adequate densities that are something that the developers would feel comfortable with and not be potentially annexing into neighboring communities. Um, that's really the biggest threat that was identified through this whole process was annexation. Um, and they don't need to annex to get the sewers. The sewers are coming, but they do need to, if, if we don't change the zoning in the township, um, then they very well could likely annex to get better zoning from neighboring community. Uh, what I do want to point out is that this Quick Strategy Guide is only a policy document. And as they mentioned, it's not over, over superseding or overtaking the twenty twenty comp plan that was approved in November of twenty twenty-one. Uh, that plan still has a lot of, um, great planning principles in it. Um, we are just providing this as a, an appendix or supplement to that um, to allow for different options when sewers are available. But again, it's only policy. So if it goes from the zoning commission onto the trustees and the trustees adopted or adopting it as policy, and then we have to go back and actually write zoning regulations that are in compliance or conformance with that plan and go through the rezoning process for those individual areas. Um, so that is what is in front of everybody tonight. I'm going under the assumption that everybody has seen or heard the presentation. So I'd be happy to open it up to questions now, or give it back to you, Mike, is what I'll do.
Well, at this point, uh, let's kind of check with the public that's here. Is, are there any members of the public present who did not participate in one of those meetings? The reason I'm asking that is we give you an opportunity to ask a question at this point. Okay, looks like we had good participation. That's great, yeah. I went to several of them. I didn't go to all of them. Strategic planning members, of course, were at all ten, unless they were ill or had some other kind of a major conflict, I'm sure. Holly, I know, was at all ten. The feedback that we have received at this point has been pretty positive about those. But, okay, with that, then, uh, there's no public participation at this point. I will ask the zoning commission members for uh, any questions or comments, and please feel free to direct those to, to Holly.
I, I have, I want, I wanted to thank you for incorporating all of the stuff that we've commented on in the past. And I didn't have a chance to, to ask before because I was reading the plan for a different purpose at that time. But now that I've gone back through it and read it all as a continuing document, I, I was wondering if it would be possible to expand the area of the Center Village District, because I think we're directing all of the major commercial development and major residential development to the south here. And I think that's going to take away from the value of having a central village.
And it's just going to ask you to do it. You're already working on it, reading that map up, correct?
So this is what is currently proposed, and I will tell you that we did take a look at some possible expansions of it um, over the last month or so. Um, and we ultimately left it this way at this time. I am not opposed to um, making it larger. Um, I think it, it makes more sense to get that feedback from you than versus us coming and saying, you know, maybe it should be larger. So I'm glad that you brought that up because it was something that we had already thought of. And, um, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know if you want to go into like specific additions, or if you want to, if you, if you think you're going to make a recommendation tonight of just making it a broad recommendation for us to review a larger area. I don't, I don't know how we want to handle that.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure how it would be done either, but I, I, I do see on the, the map that there are several large parcels that are do not have residences on them right now. And, um, some of them that could become landlocked, um, if we're not careful. And, and I, I just think that adding a few of those areas would make it more likely to attract some business, even small businesses, like a restaurant or a coffee shop or something.
And Holly, as you're working on creating, quote, these districts, at the point that you're creating them, you're going to specify the boundaries.
Correct, yes.
And right now, those are not specific.
Correct. That's the other, the, I think you're bringing up a good point, that as long as we're general in here, which we are, when we get to the actual overlay zoning districts, then we can be specific. And if it doesn't match exactly what's in here, it's fine, because these are general areas.
Yeah, because the, so that we wouldn't be bound by what's here, but we would be bound once a zoning, uh, the district is, is defined.
Correct.
And then if that would brought, bring, uh, once it's brought forward, then we would consider it if we adopt it, then we'd become bound by that.
Correct.
Okay, that, that's what would be my understanding. So we wouldn't necessarily have to expand this tonight, but potentially we could.
I agree. I, I actually think that um, in order to keep the process moving and to make sure that we're getting into the zoning itself, um, I would encourage us to be a little more broad tonight and then narrow that down with the zoning.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as you're, you're willing to consider it and.
I'm absolutely willing to consider it. And I, I, you've seen that I've taken your other comments into consideration, so I, I'm absolutely hundred percent on what is that.
And if, when, when a district is brought to us for consideration, we can tweak that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I think, as a matter, the planning committee will take a look at the boundaries and absorb resident content, uh, uh, comments, comments from the, from the, from the convention uh, and build those into the boundaries before it even reaches us again.
Correct.
So that's a very, that, that's really in the weeds. How are you dealing with individual parcels?
Well, yeah, I was, I, I am just concerned about, you know, if, if. if, if our idea is to create a town center or a village center kind of thing, there, there needs to be space for that to occur.
I don't disagree with that. I, I agree, so.
And I think keeping that consideration of make it viable, I think is an important consideration that we not create a district that then doesn't work.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want to come back and do it again in a year.
But, but I think it's also interesting that the, the PRCD that we're working on now has been in the zoning resolution for fifteen years, more?
Uh, no.
Not quite ten.
Yeah, it's about ten years.
Yeah, I think it's twenty fourteen.
Yeah, it was fourteen. I was thinking, trying to remember, but I'm pretty sure that's right. It was twenty fourteen when we initially adopted.
And so it took ten years for anyone to actually use it?
Yeah.
I think some of these will be used faster.
Yes. Well, there's a lot more pressures for development now than there was in twenty fourteen.
I just want to make sure I'm totally clear about the rural town center, so that would not include like big box stores or anything.
Correct, yeah. When, when we're looking at the uses, we actually break retail and office down by size. And then we don't allow the bigger stuff and overlay.
Other question or comments from the zoning commission?
If there's not, no one else, I, I would make a suggestion that on, in reference to page twenty-two, the first paragraph, where we talk about that district staff explained that this sewer service agreement between the city of Columbus and Delaware County brings the sewers to the county line of the Smothers Road Roundabout. And then you go into more detail about what that sewer service agreement entails. I think since we do have a copy of that agreement, or we, we have access to a copy of that agreement, that we should make that a part of the appendix in the back of the document itself so that it becomes an item that we can reference.
I agree with that.
And I don't know whether we become, I don't, I don't know that we need to make a specific appendix letter or just.
I just put it at the last one, whatever.
We're up to F.
And if we label the Quick Strategy Guide as an appendix, and we make, if, as we were adopted as an addendum, it would also end up being Appendix G because we have in the table of contents for the Comprehensive Plan.
So that ends up being Appendix G of Appendix G?
That's what we're saying.
Yes, that's exactly what we're saying. Maybe we use capital letters and small letters or something. So that would be a change. Tom, from my understanding, you're proposing a language change in, in the document tonight?
Not even a language change unless we, we put in something, you know, I don't know how you reference the other items in the appendix. Do you say C appendix or they're just there?
No, typically we, in the document, we would say wherever we're talking about it and then that such document is in.
Yeah, so I guess if we can, if we can add that verbiage into page twenty-two, where you reference the sewer agreement, C page or C Appendix G.
Yep.
And that.
Okay, so there would be a phrase added there on page twenty-two?
Yeah.
And where are you putting it?
I would put it on the fourth line after quote sewer agreement and quote.
City of Columbus and Delaware County. So is it the fourth line after the phrase between city of Columbus?
Actually before that, so where it says parenz, quote sewer agreement.
Okay. Always friends. All right.
I'd put it inside the parenz.
Yeah, that's just what I was going to say then, put it inside the parentheses.
C Appendix G.
C Appendix G.
I think that, you know, that, that, that's enough to lead people to, to where it is. And I think from comments that I've, or questions that I've been asked and others, it would be, I think, good policy just to have that agreement embedded in the, in the guide itself. Everyone wants to look at it, they can read it.
Yeah, there are frequently questions asked about the sewer agreement and how it came about. It's getting quite old now.
Yeah, yes.
It came with Polaris.
Yes. I have no other changes to recommend, I think.
Okay. Anybody else have a question or any change that you would like to offer? As Joni has already indicated, we had made some input on an earlier draft. And Holly, we, we very much appreciate your addressing those. I think for the public's benefit, I just want to point out a couple of them because I think they were important, very important in that one had to do with the fact that we have a planned residential conservation district that applies to all, currently applies to all FR1 farm residential and AR1 agriculture residential districts. Or any zoning that property has those two charac, those two district zones, they could pull down the PRCD and nothing that is being proposed will change that. That remains in place. And the Comprehensive Plan, as it was originally adopted, remains in place. We're only adding to it. We're not taking away anything. And I just want to make sure that that gets stated, making, making that a part of the record. Because there were some folks who were somewhat concerned about what that meant. And we verified that in fact, there's nothing that will prohibit that from occurring. Legal counsel has advised me that it's perfectly legitimate to do that. So I didn't have any additional changes or suggestions for change that I wanted to make. So back to the commission again. Okay, at this point, then I want to open it up to the public, public who are present and public who are present via Zoom. If you have a question that you would like to ask or comment, please feel free to, if you're in, in the room, come to the podium. If you're on Zoom, you need to unmute and let us know your name and your address, what, as you get up to speak. So sir, if you would introduce yourself, name and address?
My name is Michael Jones. I live at ninety-six ninety-one Covean Drive. I'm a builder. My concern is I haven't seen the, all the wording to the document that you're just referring to. But I think that the sewer language, I mean, the sewer is what's really going to tear this township apart. That should be right in those main pages. It shouldn't be referenced back. It should be, even tonight, all these people zooming in, you should tell them exactly what it means. What's this mean? Once that sewer hits, hits the roundabout, what does it mean? And once it comes down Red Bank Road, what does it mean? Does it mean that you actually have to join the sewer? Do you have to pay capacity charges, tap fees, all those kind of things? What does that mean? And to me, it's pretty important because it's a huge expanse and we have a lot of people that live way off the road that I'm not sure what this regulations are as far as tapping into that sewer. And then do you have to tap into it? What are the requirements not to tap in? Or how can you block the sewer from not coming up? Is another question for me because I know there's no sewer, the density is going to be way down. It could be, you know, every two acres per house. Conservation subdivision in Trenton Township a couple of years ago was five acres, even the lot sizes were five acres and the conservation was still fifty percent of the total acreage. So I would like to see something like that written for the township. So I'm not sure how far I am away from where you guys are in the book, but I think that's, that would be a good start because I don't think a lot of us want more growth in the township. That's all. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for the question about the sewers. We, we do have an answer to that. Holly, do you want to go ahead and share that? Yes, and the question with regard to are people required to sign in or join, the answer is no, they're not necessarily required to tap.
Yeah.
But go ahead.
That came up. As far as putting that into the plan, that is not a decision of the township. So I do not feel comfortable putting that in a plan. That is not something the township can or cannot require. So.
It's a requirement, or I shouldn't say a requirement, but it's an agreement that the county entered into with Columbus. The township has no legal rights associated with that sewer agreement whatsoever, none, zero. We can't do anything about it.
None of the townships.
None of the townships in Delaware County.
There, there's nothing the township can do to stop the sewers from happening. It is agreement between the county and the city.
County commissioners know ours pleasure with all this? I mean, have we met with them?
Yeah.
How about, how about the wine? Has anybody met with the wine and said, you know, you dropped this bomb on us without anything in advance? Now we're scrambling around and all these changes are coming. Are you going to help us? I mean, somebody should be chewing on it. I'm willing to go down and do it if somebody else is too.
I think unfortunately, the, the sewer coming up to Harlem Township in the south is independent of the Intel development. They're happening, they're, they're happening at the same time, but there's really no connection, no connection that we know of between the two of them. The sewers were going to happen anyway. And they were going to be, you know, the holes in the ground. It'll be opened up in early twenty twenty-six, I think. That was going to happen whether or not Intel picked New Albany as a, as a site for their new fabs. Now that they have, it just puts more pressure on the township.
Yeah.
And become a, a bedroom community for Intel.
That trunk sewer is not really, at that point, isn't, right now, there's no plan that is going to provide services directly for Intel. It's not. See, that's further east. That's dealt with separately. So Intel really, as Tom just stated, it really had nothing to do with the fact we've been talking about this potential sewer ending point for the last three years?
Longer.
Talking about that. Well, the agreement went in freight, in place, what, forty years ago? It's been there a very long time. All right, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I mean, I want to explain where the sewer is coming up. Yeah, so the sewer is coming up right here and it's going, which is right at the Smothers Road Roundabout. And it's going to extend, it's going to be there by twenty twenty-six. And then Delaware County has the agreement to extend feeder lines into Harlem Township. We estimate that the area that they could potentially serve reaches almost probably to Center Village Road, basically based on a watershed. And as I mentioned in all ten of the meetings, that with that sewer there, if we don't provide some type of density that would support the sewers through the annexation so that you can, they can go into another community where that they can get the zoning and you'd use all your design control and all your density controls at that point in time. Or if they, if the other option that there is is to sue, which most developers are going to choose the annexation before suing, but the other option is to sue and because you're not providing a zoning that allows them to utilize their length and capacity that the sewer provides. It's being considered to take.
Hey, thank you, Holly. Other members of the public present, if you have a question, please come to the podium or comment. They'd like to hear from you. How about the folks on Zoom? I can't see it here, but Holly, maybe you take down that down in case there is somebody that wants to. If you are, if you are present on Zoom and you want to ask a question or make a comment, please unmute yourself now and then identify yourself by name and address, please. Apparently, if they can hear me, there's no one indicating they have a question or a comment. I don't want to cut them off prematurely.
There are seven people on and no one has their hand raised and they're all on mute.
Okay. All right, I guess then at that point, back to the members of the commission. Anything further from anyone on the commission? Okay, well, consider the public portion of the hearing to be closed. And back to the commission members, what is the pleasure now of the commission with regard to the Quick Strategy Guide?
Well, I would make a motion. I'll read into the record for the record. I move that we recommend approval and submission to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees of the twenty twenty-three Harlem Township Quick Strategy Guide as approved by the Harlem Township Strategic Planning Committee on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. So that become an addendum to the twenty twenty Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan as adopted November twenty twenty-one with the full force of the Township Comprehensive Plan. But with the changes enumerated below to be incorporated in the Quick Strategy Guide for force submissions to Harlem Township for trustees. And the only change that I would incorporate this is on page twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Should reference.
It's paragraph one, right?
Paragraph one, should reference C Appendix G. And that Appendix G will be a hard copy of the sewer agreement between the city of Columbus and Delaware County.
Would you write that in so that we can, we can then also give the hard copy? Everybody will make, we want to make sure that it's written correctly.
We want to read back.
Okay. Okay.
I think I have, I have no capture. And I'll give that to, not Mike.
Mr. Cannon, yes.
Yes, Mr. Cannon. Continuing on, this motion to recommend approval of the subject addendum to the twenty twenty Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan is based on the following findings of facts and conclusions. Number one, the sewer service agreement between the city of Columbus and Delaware County extends a municipal sewer trunk line to the Delaware County line at Smothers Road, just west of the Harlem Road Roundabout. Delaware County Regional Sewer District is evaluating several proposals for extending municipal sewer feeder lines to a significant portion of Harlem Township as far north as the northern boundary of the Duncan Run sub watershed. Number two, Intel Corporation announced in January twenty twenty-two its plans to construct two new microchip manufacturing plants, in quotes, fabs, within ten minute drive time from Harlem Township. Number three, these two Intel fabs so close to Harlem Township, coupled with other large nearby projects in support of Facebook, Google, and Amazon, will create a demand for commercial and residential development in the township. Number four, Harlem Township's proximity to these industrial developments make the township an attractive target for developers to annex parcels into nearby municipalities to procure municipal services and more favorable zoning. Number five, while the twenty twenty Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan- Number five, while the twenty twenty Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan adopted November twenty twenty-one, recognize the need to include some commercial uses and some higher density housing in the southern portion of the township. Industrial development in the area and the extension of municipal sewers will require some changes to the comprehensive plan in order to create a foundation or zoning that will encourage well-planned development within the township, discourage annexation into adjoining municipalities, and allow the township to maintain some level of control over development. Number six, the purpose of the subject addendum is to provide a foundation in the comprehensive plan for the township to adopt new zoning overlay districts that will encourage well-planned development within the township that wards off annexation, preserves some agricultural land use, and will help preserve some semblance of rural character in the more developed areas.
Do we need to reference it as an appendix? It's going to be an addendum, but if we reference it at the very beginning, uh, so that it becomes an addendum to the Harlem Township has adopted and.
I think that's.
Yeah, where we would put the appendix reference in there, let's see.
Is it becomes appendix G?
So that it becomes appendix G?
As adopted, um.
That way, then it could be, it'll appear in the table of contents as appendix G with the, with the title.
So if we change it, if we add this here, and so that it becomes an addendum.
As appendix G. Yeah. All right. Now.
So where you want to stick that?
This is in the, in the first paragraph of the motion, the fourth line. At the very end of the fourth line, so that it becomes an addendum.
As appendix G.
And insert as appendix G to the twenty twenty Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Now, would you like the motion read again? Or is it, here everyone clear enough on it? Okay. Uh, any further discussion then on the motion? Seeing none, then, uh, Mr. Cannon. We have a motion to, uh, recommend the Quick Strategy Guide as appendix G for approval. Would you call the roll?
Mike Cadler.
Aye.
Tony Manson.
Aye.
Bruce Samuel. Virginia Lewis.
Aye.
I'm need.
Aye.
Brittany Hopper.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries five zero. Um, with that, what will happen now is that we will forward our recommendation to the trustees. They will, um, schedule a hearing. I don't know exactly when they will do that. They're, uh, we'll forward the recommendation to them, but, uh, they just had their meeting this month. So that would most likely mean, unless they have a special meeting, that they will not receive this and schedule a hearing until their meeting in June. And then, I'm sorry, not, and in March. They won't be that far out. It'll be in March. And then, um, following their scheduling of the hearing, it, whatever date they set that for, um, then, once they would hold the hearing and they will take action on, uh, approving uh, or denying, um, our recommendation to them. Um, so I want everyone to be aware that that's what will happen next. Um, and then the, the process will continue to move forward. Uh, with that said, um, I will, um, call for a mo-. Yes, you have a question?
So what recommendation would the zoning commission make to the trustees as far as getting after this, knowing this is time critical? I, if it was me, I would be recommending that they get at this sometime before the next trustees meeting and have a special meeting as long as they meet the posting guidelines for legal purposes. So I also think it's probably going to be a pretty well-attended meeting. And so I would think a special meeting would be in order.
I am, as a consultant, I would highly recommend that the, um, there be a special meeting as well. And I don't know if, if it makes more sense to have you as a commission, um, also support that. But I will be recommending that as a consultant, that we look at that as well.
Okay, well, we can c- consider that then, once we would, um, close this hearing and go back into our regular meeting or our special meeting, I should say. Uh, but at this point, then, we've got the motion to, um, close the hearing and adjourn the hearing, but we will go back to the, that means we'll reopen our, um, recessed, uh, special meeting. So I did, did we call the, we would call the roll on the motion. Now I need you to call a roll in terms of closing the hearing.
Here we go. Mike Cadler.
Aye.
Tony Manson.
Aye.
Bruce Samuel. Virginia Lewis.
Aye.
I'm need.
Aye.
Brittany Hopper.
Aye.
All right, so the hearing is closed. Um, now, we will go back and come out of recess, uh, because we've closed the hearing, uh, for our special meeting. And with that, we heard, we heard Steve's suggestion to us, uh, as a commission.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Another roll call.
Please, we're not all here.
Thank you, because somebody might have left. Here.
Dave Manson.
Here.
Bruce Samuel. Virginia Lewis.
Here.
I'm need.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
All right, thank you. Uh, so now we're officially back in session. Um, and as I, going back, we had, we had a suggestion from Steve. Steve, if you will come to the microphone and, uh, just make it again so that we are clear on what it is that you're recommending that we consider.
Steve Eisenbrow, four nine oh nine Harlem Drive. Uh, I guess I have a request and a proposal to the zoning commission that given the passage or whatever you call it, adoption tonight, or the motion, uh, to move this forward, uh, that you take steps to encourage the trustees to get this on their agenda as soon as feasibly possible while meeting the needs of posting requirements. That I think it's going to be well-attended. I also think this is time-critical and it's important enough, it should be dealt with in the manner of its own meeting. So I'm asking you to kind of champion this forward to the trustees.
All right.
Good.
Um.
Honestly, I don't know if we're allowed to present them with something that's not already, we have to present it to them in a meeting. Right?
Well, they would have to, they would have to schedule that meeting. And we will get the recommendation to them, um, basically within five days. It'll go to the trustees, but then they are the ones that have to determine when they're going to meet. I mean, the next regular meeting is within thirty days. They could wait until then, but they could schedule sooner than that. They can have a special meeting.
As long as it meets all the disclosure requirements.
Uh, that's right. They, they will have to meet all the disclosure requirements with, uh, under the Ohio Revised Code in terms of, uh, scheduling the hearings.
So who passes this to trustees?
But the, they do have to meet those requirements, but it's not this decision that they eventually would make is not a referendable decision. Everything else applies.
And I, I agree though with, with what Steve is asking and, and what Holly has said is that it is time-sensitive. Uh, the trustees have already told us they would like to have this, would like to have the overlay districts um, completed by this summer. Uh, and this really sets us back in that, in that regard. Um, I think, I, I personally am comfortable recommending, or at least, uh, suggesting to the trustees that now that they have a quick strategy guide approved and in their, in, in their court that we, that they move on it as quickly as they can.
Okay, well, how about a motion to the effect of, um, you know, the zoning commission is encouraging the trustees to schedule, uh, a special meeting to consider our recommendation for the adoption of the Harlem Township Quick Strategy Guide as part of the Comprehensive Plan. I don't know if you want to say as quickly as possible, whatever phrase might be appropriate there. And then we can have a motion to that effect and we'll pass it on to them.
You just made the motion.
Did I say I made the motion? I was, I was suggesting it. All right, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And I, we'll have the language say as quickly as possible. Uh, all right, so that'll be up to our, uh, administrative assistant from the zoning office to take the motion and put the motion in writing and then we can get that submitted along with the motion regarding the, uh, the recommendation that we're submitting on Quick Strategy Guide.
We have a motion and a second. We need a vote.
Yes.
Or discussion and then.
I haven't called for that yet, but you're correct. Yeah, I was going to that. I was just pointing out steps that were going to follow. That's all.
Okay.
All right. Um, so with that, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion on the motion? It's okay the way I stated it.
Well. However, it comes out on the, the recording.
Well, you always, uh, maybe I can write it down and then we can restate it.
Are, are you comfortable getting that in writing from the, from the recording or?
Do you want me to write it down?
Uh, yes, you would please.
Okay.
Okay.
That'll take me a minute or two.
And, and the only, um, stumbling block I see is that one of the trustees is out of, out of town for an extended period, and the other two trustees may or may not be comfortable moving it forward more quickly.
You know when Dave's coming back?
Oh, he's not coming back till April, I think. Yeah, so that, they will not wait till then. Yeah, they just, they need to make sure that there's at least two of them here.
It was sixty degrees outside.
Still not.
Tomorrow won't be though. Back to the twenties.
While we're waiting for Mike, I'd just like to thank the members of the public who took time out of their schedule for this special meeting on a date that's not normally used for zoning hearings. Appreciate your interest.
Okay. Now I'll read it. Just to restate my motion for the commission so that it's clear, I move that the zoning commission request that the trustees schedule a special meeting as soon as possible to set a hearing date in order to consider adopting the Quick Strategy Guide as recommended by the zoning commission. And it was seconded by, oh, oh, Virginia, sorry.
Okay.
Seconded by Virginia Lewis. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, then, um, we can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no? Motion carries. So we'll submit that along with the motion, uh, recommending adoption of the Quick Strategy Guide. Okay, now with that, any other business that you want to do tonight?
Um, where are we going to look at? The other language that Virginia had.
So, so we can, however, I have not read through all of Kendra's emails about social media policy and things like that. So I don't know that I can actually give you an accurate answer on whether or not that works.
Yeah.
But I would agree, I think we, I haven't looked at it either, like the social media policies. I took a quick glance at it. Uh, I think we, we all need to kind of familiarize ourselves with that, for one thing. And then the second part, though, the other item, um, in terms of, uh, what we did with that, um, the procedures and so forth, that's already taken care of.
Yes.
We'll move that process forward. And I don't, the other part of the discussion has to do with what's going to be our view with regard to where we were a year and a half ago, when we said that, um, to some extent, we didn't want the zoning inspector involved in reviewing things because of what the applicant then may consider that to mean. So that'll be happy, be part of our discussion again, because if, at one point, we didn't think that was something that we wanted to have happen. Now we're suggesting that we do want it to happen.
No, I thought before we, we didn't want it, them to come to the commission, talk to commission members.
Yeah, but there were specific comments made that, you know, zoning, the zoning inspector by reviewing something might give the implication that, that it's going to be okay.
I mean, I don't know, I thought it wasn't that the zoning inspector was going to necessarily like review it for accuracy. Just I thought give, they were, the zoning inspector was going to give direction on like, where to find the information, what are the right forms? Like, make sure you read the procedural guidelines and follow them, like, not like, oh, I see your application, it's right, it's wrong.
Yeah.
Unless they present it and they see like a fatal flaw right away. As they can be like.
It's not complete.
Yeah.
They can say, you know, you forgot this page.
More than anything, I think it's to sort of field questions about, you know, have I, have I done what I need to do? Where can I find this information? Things like that. Not so much like, hey, check this and make sure it's going to get approved. That's, that's not Mike's job.
Well.
Yeah.
No, it is not. And that's where we were before. I just want to make sure that everybody is clear on what it is that you're going to set as the expectations for Mr. Cannon and for that office. Because he needs to be clear on what he, it would be that we would have in terms of our expectation.
Mike, do you have specific questions about?
Do not have any specific questions. I think a lot of what you guys are talking about, it's okay. I mean, it's.
Because see, Matt Courage didn't want to do it at all.
I'm aware. All fairness to Matt, Matt was, yeah, he had something else he was doing. I think a lot of it right now is, uh, it is happening a lot now. People aren't coming in, and I make it a point, and I know you guys brought it up too, saying, you know, we, we just want to think you, Mike's going to come in and prove it. I'm not going to approve anything on the spot. It's not going to approve their application on the spot. We have question, we have questions. I talked to him about it. We look through it, and I do tell him, you, you, you are well within your, this is what I do. I tell you, if it's on your plot, in the right spot, you got the ground for it, you got the height for it. But when we're looking at it, I tell them, you know, you can go, you know, you, you're well within your rights to take it before the committee. You're well within your rights to have, to go for variance. I can't stay in the way. That's not my place. So I don't think they leave there with the expectation or come in even with the expectation, because I make it clear that I'm not going to approve anything and give them a blessing or say, yeah, you're good to go. It's going to fly.
Yeah.
Because I don't do that. It's, it'll be clear. I don't, I don't think we need to get hung up on, on, you know, putting it anywhere what I am or am not going to do.
As long as, as long as you're okay with that, then that's fine with me. I, I, that was not a full-time capacity. Like, this was not, it, it got out of control faster than I think any of us in the township were expecting. So Matt ended up with a, a lot more to handle, but I.
Yes, absolutely.
You know.
I do agree with the fact that we don't want to make a requirement, because some people are very skilled on it.
Yeah.
Well, and if we make it a requirement, that implies that there's going to be more in terms of, if, if you meet your expectations. it's probably gonna get approved, and that's why I don't think we should make it a requirement.
No, I don't think so either.
Okay, that sounds good, and I'm glad that you're comfortable with that. I don't have any issues at all with the way we've described it and what you're describing, you, you are doing now and would continue to do.
So if we don't make a requirement, just for argument's sake, and somebody decides to meet with you and get your direction on what has to be done and uh, where to find the information, but not to actually read it and approve it, um, and they come in and we find a flaw. Do we say then, as opposed to somebody who never, never talked to you, never came to you, didn't ask you any questions, just came straight here and had fatal flaws? Is there a difference between those two, and do we want to waive the forfeit on one hand and not waive?
No, I think that gets too complicated.
You need to keep to the standard.
I think once it gets to you guys, they made the decision down below you, where, where they wanted to go, they didn't want to come and get it.
Yeah.
We can't have you guys up there or, or get the perception that you guys are giving any kind of, you know, difference of opinion. I think it's cut and dry when it gets to you guys. You can come in, you don't have to come in, you can come in and talk to him or.
Well, and they can come in and talk to you five times if they have five questions, you know, you can go back as many times as you need.
Yeah, I, I think, I think when it, if it gets, once it gets, you know, I'm not, like I said, I'm not gonna prove it, and then they're gonna have to make their own decision on whether or not they think they want to go through it, and I'll make that point quick.
Yes.
Our office will make it clear, and we may even go support and make sure that you guys are gonna go like that.
And, and.
Well, and I think, I think we've made a lot of policy changes in that effect over the past couple of years, because when I first started, it was like, oh, take it back, try again, we'll see you next month, and, you know, it just kept getting drawn out. And I think that's why we've done things like the acknowledgement, like this. You gotta get it right now, because we're going to get too many applications to sit here and say, it's okay, try again, five.
But remember, when you first came on, we were getting, you know, half dozen a year.
I'm not saying there wasn't a need for that progression be- based on all the incoming traffic that we've had there, I mean, they went hand in hand, but I think we've already put a lot of steps into place to help make sure that the process goes smoothly forever.
One of the things that, that we need to make sure of, and this really, Mike, is directed, uh, at you as well, um, we need to check and make sure that, and you and I talked about this briefly before the meeting, that all the forms that are out there online are the accurate currently approved forms, because we can't have people printing off something and using it from our website.
And editable would be great if they could type their information in instead of writing it by hand, that would be wonderful. I know Joe Place made one for us already, and he was talking about doing a second. So if we can get those editable forms on the website, that'd be even better.
I think that is the ultimate goal, right now, we're kind of digging out of a hole.
Well, and you've got, you got approval last night at the trustee meeting for the Adobe Acrobat software that will allow that to happen.
That is the goal, and, and anything we find is not usable, or anything, really, we're just taking it off the website, because, yeah, you know, unfortunately, sometimes they come in, they have that form they print off the website, it's not enough, and they have to redo it by hand, which.
Yep.
They don't want to do that, and I, I understand that, but fortunately, that's the way we gotta go right now.
Yep.
We will get that in line, but it's gonna take a little bit of time.
Yeah, I understand, but it's just important that we make sure we address that, because it, it's been a struggle in the past. Now, we've got you full-time, and we've got, uh, regular hours for an administrative assistant, which is a huge, huge difference from where we've been. So, but you can't make it happen overnight.
No, and I don't think any of us are expecting that either, we all know there's gonna be a learning curve with everything, it just, you know, wh- while we're talking about it, that is something I want to make sure is, is being worked towards, the editable typed versions.
Very good. So, um, I will put this other item back on the agenda then for our March meeting, and unless there's other business you want to conduct, uh, motion to adjourn would be welcome.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no? All right, we're adjourned.
Mike, do you take this?
Okay.
That was fun. That was less than a handful than I thought it would be. There's nobody said.
I was hoping we could do that all of the night and that things move on smoothly.
You know, that we just about the PRCD, this was, please.
We get to do that one again.
Steve said, this motion was made, other motion.
I sent Joe my comments, but I never heard back.
I, I was going through this thing again and did not.
I don't know if I should extend to Joe or not.
Uh, you're not gonna be able to make it on the twenty seventh, or your schedule changed.
No, I sent you guys my comments, I don't know if you got them.
You got my comment?
I think so, and I sent them to Joe.
Yeah, yeah, you did.
So.
Yeah.
I just, sure, yeah, no, you sent them to Joe and he, he, uh, called me, taking the comments, all of the ones that he has, and he makes the changes, he'll bring another draft down, uh, and he'll, he'll either bring it tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow, he'll be down Monday. And so there'll be copies here, so hard copies. And then we'll get one electronically, but if you want a hard copy for the veto on the twenty seventh, you can stop by the office. I'll, I'll send out, out as an email, but I haven't done it yet, I just talked today.
Okay, cool.
All right. Well, it seems like almost everyone on the team, right, was a member of the committee.
The very edges. To not. No, just that, uh, Mike.
Which we knew he was gonna come, our ideas.
Well, last night he was saying.
I want to see you talk to you.
I hear him.
Well, he went up and, it's right, now I remember. Oh, I got something going on, he went up and talked. You and everybody else looking up all that.
I know, right?
Thank you finally. If there really isn't anything we could do.
The north, hold on.
No, last night.
Where have you been for the last certain?
Yeah.
I think.
You know, last night he was all about, you know, somebody has to go talk to Twine and tell him we don't want tours, and it's like.
Yeah, right, I knew, I knew exactly.
So.
Twenty seven, yes. That's at seven thirty, and it's just a hearing, but I have. I'll make these maps.
See if I can view. It's on your list.
Today, one forty-five, I saw the one forty-five, and your appointment was at one fifteen.
But she was lucky.
Yeah, they were so nice to me, not only did they take me, it was only a appointment for Alma.
This is gonna be the whole mixed use here, I don't, it would be, I mean, get them all over with.
Yeah, but I was, that they let me just jump that on and say.
The better map.
They did, so not only.
So, when we get to Green, it's west of there, we bump it up to both sides.
Calendar, because I would have.
And the twenty-five, it's the.
So, uh, up here, outside of this point area, is gonna be, um, one to three dwelling, it's traker, but down here, it's gonna be the higher, it's gonna be closer to the three. Because we're gonna be transitioning out.
Right, is the recording still going?
Oh, I don't know.
I thought maybe you should have it all.
Great job, Joe.
How are you? Told me like eight or nine.
Correct.
Uh, I just want to, because otherwise, all those noises. You need to get out of that, you know.
Omni.
I need to get, yeah. Get rid of the screen here.
There we go.
There's the end, that's.